I call the meeting to order. For Tuesday, April twenty eighth, official meeting at five thirty P M. For moment of silence, why don't we just have a moment of silence, everyone? For our, for the, uh. For the, for the victims of this coronavirus. Thank you. Could we have roll call, please?
Oh, yes, you can. Mrs. Hall.
Here.
Mrs. Thurston.
Here.
Mr. Ryder.
Present.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Here.
Mr. Salazar.
Here.
Mr. Rutledge.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Here.
Chairman Cruzel.
Here.
Thank you. Number five superintendent's report. A school closure distant learning update, Mr. Dreszak, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, since we haven't officially met since March tenth. I thought I'd just take a brief moment to sort of recap, um, a bit of chronology that we've gone through since we've all last saw each other. Um, if you guys can recall back on our last meeting on the tenth. I let you all know that there was a, at that moment, we hadn't gotten any direction from the state that we would be forced to close schools. Um, but that we were put on notice that in the event we were to have to force a school closure. It would be, we would need to be prepared for up to fourteen days. Um, and that was pretty much the guidance that we've, that we received, obviously, um, it, we've gone on much longer than that. Um, but just so that the, the public's aware, I know we, we mentioned this during our board meeting, but I don't know if people actually saw it. Uh, we didn't really receive, and this isn't to knock anything at the State Department of Ed or the state of Connecticut. They've been doing the best they can throughout this, this unprecedented time. Um, but we didn't really back in March receive any guidance on, on what to do in the event we were forced to close, and I want to just reiterate. Um, all the information to that point was prepare to close for up to fourteen days. No one said anything about a month and a half, two months indefinitely. It was prepared for up to fourteen days. So what we had begun to do on March sixth, the previous Friday before our meeting. As we pulled our staff and our teachers and our administrators and our clerical staff members together. We started putting together a distance learning packet in the event we were forced to close for fourteen days. And those were, the end result of that was the packets that all of our students received on March twelfth. Which coincidentally was the day that we had to make the decision in conjunction with our director of public health. And as the board may be aware, but I don't know if the whole community is aware. Um, every major decision that we've made from the board's perspective, we've done consultation with the town manager's office as well. Cause that was the same day that the town of Enfield declared Enfield as a state of emergency. So at that point, uh, as March twelve, all of our kids left that, that afternoon from school. With fourteen days worth of educational materials. We also left the following day, the thirteenth, as a pickup date for any student that may have been absent on the twelfth. Um, so families can come actually here to central office and a lot of you came by to help out and Andy and I spent. Uh, very late that evening on Thursday along with Walter and then on most of the day Friday. Trying to distribute those fourteen days of materials for, for parents and for students. Because we were forced to close on the twelfth, our kids were actually prepared to at least have some educational materials as of the thirteenth when they were gone. Um, I just want to bring the light to the board that as late as March eighteenth. Um, you know, four days after we'd already closed, the official position from the state of Connecticut. Was their recommendation was to not do distance learning at all. The, the official recommendation from the state was that. It, if you are closed, which we all were at that point. To eliminate your vacations and extend your school year to June thirtieth if need be. Um, because we had already sent our students home with materials. We were in a position to apply for a waiver for those fourteen days if we were out that long, which we were. To count towards actual school days so that we didn't have to make those days up. Um, we had applied and things had happened so quickly. That by the time we put our application in, we were one of the first nine in the state of Connecticut to be granted the waiver. And even on the day that we were granted the waiver and we notified you as board members. The recommendation from the state was still, don't apply for the waiver, just use those days as vacations. Uh, treat them as traditional snow days, I should say. Within forty-eight hours, the tenor changed completely. It went from start thinking about distance learning, put a plan together, you could apply for a waiver if you'd like. To don't apply for a waiver any longer, do the best you can, start distance learning in any way in any capacity that you can. So we were at a bit of an advantage. In that first two weeks because we had put in, you know, the effort to, to make sure that our kids. Had left with something, something tangible that they can do during those first fourteen days. But the purpose wasn't that we're going to send these kids home with packets and that's what we're going to do for the rest of this school year. Um, the reason, and I've got a lot of questions from the public about why we chose to do things in paper and pen as opposed to doing things more virtually like we're doing now. Uh, at the time, and it's still true, it was true up until this week. A lot of our kids don't have devices like this at home. So in order for our plan to be equitable, we had to ensure the state that we would give every student the same opportunity to complete their work. Um, and, and not be at any disadvantage if they were lacking any electronic materials. So that's why we had done the first phase, if you will, of the distance learning package in paper and pen and we dropped them, you know, we. Sent them home with students, we had the pickups and deliveries here. Um, then you know, the governor shut down schools altogether, and then we started having more of these conversations about this being. Um, a, a longer duration. I'm going to be honest, um. You know, when we first left, we, we, we knew that fourteen days might be a little tight as far as us returning. But conventional wisdom and along with not just us, but a lot of our colleagues were. I think this is going to probably last until April vacation. And they'll allow us back once we get back from April break. So that's when the phase two of the packets came into play, we were about five days short. Now we had gotten confirmation from the state that these days would count as school days. As long as we were providing the kids with the opportunities and our teachers all immediately agreed that they would make themselves available. Between the hours of nine and three every day so that students had questions, if they had concerns, if they wanted to set up individual appointments, they would be able to do so. We had gotten ourselves through what we believe April break and we're anticipating some more guidance from the state as how long the duration of this would be. And then we were having, and I know because the communications either if they were coming from me or they're coming from the schools. Didn't mean we weren't doing anything. We were having internal conversations of if this lasts longer. We can't continue the pace of expecting every family to have a hard, hard copy packet of information. And one of the most, the biggest questions I get all the time is how do we submit it? And as you've all noticed over the last couple of weeks. It's physically impossible for us to actually collect these assignments back for safety reasons. One, you know, you don't know where they're coming from as far as if anyone's infected in their home. And two, the safety of our staff to actually collect them. Uh, some of our, our buildings have gotten creative on how showing people how to scan them and send the information back for parent, for feedback for parents and for kids. But the whole purpose of the paper packets was to get us to that April vacation timeframe. Once we were out on April break, even though we were technically closed, and I asked everyone not to do anything. Um, that doesn't mean they listened. We spent a vast majority of April break trying to transition to a more complete virtual platform. Which is where we're at today, but hopefully. Perfecting over the next couple of coming days and weeks. Um, during that time, all of our principal, our high school had one-to-one devices already with our iPads. Our middle school and all of our elementary schools, students didn't. Now we're fortunate, a lot of our, our students that aren't in the high school have access to electronic device in their home. But we can't ignore the fact that a lot of our students don't simply don't have a device in their home. Or if they do, um, parents are telecommuting now, so they're on the device all day long. So we, we had sent out surveys. To any student in the district who did not, any family, we didn't, we weren't in a position to offer every single student a device. Because we simply don't have enough. But what we were trying to do or hoping to do was to reach every family who didn't have access to a device in their home. That we could somehow go through all of our buildings and take anything we can find. And come up with a distribution plan so that every student at Enfield, every family in Enfield has at least one device in their home. So we could start transitioning from the paper assignments to assignments that are done more virtually. What we also learned through this process is the way that we communicate this information out to parents. You notice when we first went out, you were all probably sick of my voice because I was putting school messengers out several times a week. And what we found was a lot of times if I was putting out a message and a principal was putting out a message, sometimes the message would get lost. So I made the decision that for building specific information, I was going to rely on the principals to communicate that out. Cause be quite honest, most of the kids who listen to that and the parents who listen to that. Listen more to, to Mr. Sills than they may from the guy they hear only when things are really bad. So we tried to make that transition to when we're going to switch to a virtual platform as well as the direct instructions for each building to come from the principal. What we tried to do and what we're hoping is last week we started distributing to any family that we were able to contact. And I have to give the principals and their staff an enormous amount of credit. If people didn't respond to surveys, they made individual phone calls to people's homes. They made individual phone calls to people's cell phones, trying to find and get that connection with a family. To make sure they had a device, that the device was, if they didn't have a device available, we would get one for them. Uh, we went around and got devices in all the buildings and each individual building set up their own distribution centers. Because like we did when we did the paper packets here, and Walter, you can remember that. It's not feasible for us to have a central distribution center anymore because we couldn't afford to have four hundred people showing up in one site or we'd all be violating the social distancing. So we had to spread that out more amongst the districts, um, more amongst the school. Um, we were able to do that. There's still, there's probably going to be one or two more opportunities for individual buildings or parents who weren't able to physically get here to get a device. But at the moment, the vast majority of our families, there might be an exception here or there, and we're waiting for that information to be compiled. Um, because they're still, they were still distributing as latest today. Um, most of our families, with the exception of a few, have at least a device in their home. That the kids can connect to and we can begin transitioning from the paper and pencil to more of a virtual platform. I wanted, I didn't put this out in a robo message. Prior to tonight's meeting because I wanted to be able to explain this with a face. That one of the reasons that I wanted to do this this evening. Was because I also understand the need for everyone to be flexible during this time. Just because you have a device in your home now, if you didn't have one previous to us giving you one. Doesn't mean you only have one student. You may have three children in that house that all need to be on that device to complete their work. And if we're open from nine to three for teachers being there available for, for lessons or to be available for help. That might not be feasible for every family. So what I've asked all of our administrators and all of our teachers, and I've also had this conversation with our teachers union. Is that we all need to be flexible during this time. It just may not be feasible for every student to get on during those hours. But to communicate with their, with, with those child's teacher to know, to set up a time that works for the family as well as works for the teacher. So that nobody is being missed throughout this, this unprecedented scenario. Um, I do want to bring your attention, I think the board should get some credit for this. Um, you know, as I said, we went out on March twelfth. There's a, there's an analogy that seems to pop up on every phone call I'm on is that we're learning to fly a plane at the same time we're building it. And that's absolutely true. Um, I, I've heard a lot of feedback from parents, I've heard a lot of feedback from students, both good and bad, which is understandable. Um, but one of the things I want to bring to the board's attention is there was a lot of districts in our area who didn't actually start their distance learning plan. Until March thirty-first. So we were able to start on the thirteenth, so for two whole weeks, kids in other districts had nothing to do. Were our paper pencil packets perfect? No, but there were educational opportunities for our kids to be engaged in something while we tried to figure this out. And that's the direct quote we've gotten from the commissioner and the governor. Do your best to try to figure this out. And I want to reiterate again, if people are watching, we understand the need to be flexible. And we're asking for everyone's understanding on our end to be flexible as well is because. As hard as this is for, for everyone to be going through. Um, we're all dealing with the same circumstances in our own homes as our families are. All of you are working from home right now, no one's allowed to go outside. Um, and just because you're a third grade teacher, it doesn't mean. And you're available between certain hours and you're doing lessons online and you're posting videos and you're, you're meeting your kids. Um, doesn't mean you don't have three kids of your own, that you're trying to do the same distance learning for your own children at the same time. So the only way we're going to get through this is if we all understand we're going through something that none of us could have ever imagined. And that everybody's doing the absolute best they can with the main goal in mind, keep making sure we're, we're, we're always keeping. As our North Star, what's best, in the best interest of our kids. That's it, and we're, we're, we're going to continue to learn and get better as we go. But as I said when I started, we thought by April break we would be done with this, that's what we were being told initially. Obviously that didn't happen. Um, but as you know, we went into phase two to bring us up to the April vacation. And then after April break, we started with the phase three, which we still had to have the combination of paper. Uh, and, and, and electronic because we hadn't had an opportunity to get all the devices out to the families that required them. And we had to make sure that we're doing this in an equitable manner. So what you're going to start seeing now is this transition. The transition from the way we were delivering instruction, paper and pen, to now doing it more virtually. And now we're in a position to be able to do that for everyone. It's going to be on different timetables for some, based on accessibility and how many devices are in a home. But we're going to start transitioning and that's how we're going to deliver instruction. Our teachers right now are going through extensive training on teams so they can hold more classrooms, they got more interactions with their kids. When this thing first started, we had teachers jumping on Facebook just so they could see their kids. You know, the, we had teachers that were posting videos of themselves just so their teachers can see them. Can't tell you how important that is, and I can speak from, from personal experience. For these kids to have some sense of normalcy again. But I just, it's hard sometimes in an email or in a text or even in a robo call. To explain exactly what we're trying to accomplish, how we're trying to accomplish it. At the same time, having people understand the barriers and the roadblocks that everyone's going through. That said, we are in a lot better position than some of my, my friends and colleagues are. That's not bragging, it's just we got lucky, we started earlier. And we knew that we had to go paper out of the gate, so that would put us in a position to, to start that ball rolling a little bit earlier. Um, you know, I mentioned earlier, some of the communication. We're, we're hoping to have that transition out from the building level. Because the messages were getting convoluted between, well, Chris said this, but the principal said that. We wanted to make sure that the messages are, are being, are similarly said from each school. But that parents are hearing directly from their principals to get specific instructions, because not everything's going to be the same. The pickup times and locations may be different at, at each individual school. So we wanted to make the principals have a larger voice in some of those communications. That doesn't mean I'm done, I took a hiatus for the, last week. But next week I have to get back on the microphone again and start sending things out. But I wanted to get us through that distribution before I muddied the waters with my voice and people wanting to know what I was saying. Um, I wanted to give you guys just a brief update on grading, you may have seen that JFK and the high school sent out grading systems this week. Elementary is working on it literally as we speak, we just hung up a phone call with them. All of our administrators are given the same directive when it comes to grading. That students should not be penalized because of this. Now we realize that this is new and it, it might be hard to comprehend in some cases, but everything that we do is in the best interest of our kids. The state has recommended, but not enforced, a pass fail grading model for everyone. But they will not mandate that, so it's still a local decision, so we're trying to make, weave the best of those worlds. But the end result was no kid is going to be penalized because they were stuck home for two, two and a half, three months. Uh, but those, the specific. Grade level things that you've noticed, you got the message from Enfield High School this week and JFK today. Uh, we want those messages to come directly from the buildings. Because for those who have questions, if I send it and they send me a question. I then have to call Aaron and Connell and maybe Michelle. Whereas if it comes directly from Aaron, the questions will go to the appropriate dean or the appropriate assistant principal. So we were trying to make this, this process as seamless as we can for, for parents and especially at the high school for students. And I noticed today, it went out yesterday, I spoke with some department coordinators today and they've been on the phone all day with kids getting clarification on, on some of the grading issues. Um. I've got a laundry list of thank you, so I'm just going to do one general one, because I don't want to take up everybody's time. Um, I can't tell you, someday I will. All the things that people have done to step up since March twelfth. Um, to make sure whether it was organizing parades or people coming to volunteer. Or people willing to give their own devices so kids can use it, or teachers, like I said, going on Facebook Live and just having a meeting so that kids can see their face. Um. I do have to give a very special thank you though to our nutrition services staff. Um, Diane Edwards and Judy Januski, who on the eleventh, I went down to her office and said. There's a chance we're going to be out for a while, but we still have to feed kids. And no one's going to be allowed, no one's going to be allowed near the buildings, how would we do it? And after she looked like she saw a ghost, she came back up about two hours later. Our nutrition services staff members have been feeding kids since we've been gone. Um, at the risk of their own health and safety. When we started this, the public wasn't required to wear masks, our employees weren't required to wear masks. Um, they are now, but that's been recent. So our staff members have been out interacting with our community, making sure that our kids who need healthy foods have been getting them. Um, at the risk of their own personal health and safety. Because that's what they, that's what everybody does in a time of crisis, so those, those people don't always get, yeah, they don't want it, I've seen them and. Thank them and they say wave me off, but I wanted to make sure that we are on a camera somewhere. That they got the, the, they understood the appreciation that they so greatly deserve. Um, and just lastly, you know, we all realize this isn't perfect. And I've had an opportunity to meet with every faculty virtually throughout this process. Um, and I just want to reiterate that to you guys as well. Um, and I've said this in letters, but sometimes people don't always read them. You know, this isn't perfect. It's not supposed to be. Um, nothing will ever replace the experience our students have by being in their schools, with their teachers, with their classmates, with their friends. Everyone is doing the very best they can during this crazy time. But we also realize that this is not just extremely difficult for kids, this is difficult for everyone, particularly parents. You know, parents who are maybe fortunate enough to telecommute, they have to also worry about the health of their own families. They have to worry about, is there going to be a run on grocery stores and am I going to get food to my family? They may have loved ones who are directly affected by this, God hope they don't. Um, at the same time, they've all sudden, they're locked in their homes, they're trying to help their stu, their children with their own schoolwork. It's a lot to ask of parents. Um, trust me. I'm no different than anybody else, I'm dealing with the same issues in my own house. Trying to have meetings like this and answer trigonometry questions, which I can't do. Um, this was never designed to be perfect. Um, the direction that we keep getting from this commissioner of Cardona and from Governor Lamont, what we've spoken with them was. Right now, health and safety is the most important thing that, that can, should concern anyone. And continue to do the best you can, and you're going to learn as you go and you're going to get better as you go, but right now the expectation, it went very quickly from. Think about a plan. Put something together, maybe start seriously thinking about a plan, just scrap everything, safety is the only thing that matters. Don't let anybody in your schools, make sure you feed kids, do some sort of distance learning plan, that's our expectation. Now time has progressed and those expectations will get larger. Um, but I just wanted to ask. For, I, I appreciate a lot of people, there have been more well wishes sent to me in the last month and a half that, than I probably got in the first two and a half years of being in this job. Um, but I just ask for, for folks at home that may be watching. I, I, I understand your frustrations, we really do, we're all living in as well, doesn't mean our situation's any better than yours. Um, but I just ask for our staff members, that our, our teachers and our staff, that all are going through the same experiences too. Um, and we need to be as flexible as we can for everybody. We will get through it. Um, you know, we talk, we're going to talk a minute about bending. Um, this is going to test us, but we will get through it. But the only way we get through this is if we all work together, and then I couldn't be prouder of the way everybody banded together during this horrible time. Make sure that our kids get the best experiences possible, so. That's the update, Mr. Chairman, on distance learn.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszak. Any questions for the superintendent?
Um, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. LeBlanc.
Um, I actually have two. Um, one of the questions is, um, as far as the special ed kids go. And their packets and, and how that learning is going for them.
It's going as well as it could, it's not perfect, as a matter of fact, while I was sitting here, we just got notification that. Um, the federal government has denied the waiver for IDEA. Right now, I don't know the implications of that, but, um, you know, you can't replace. If a student gets OT or PT services, it's very difficult to do that remotely. But I can tell you that our staff is doing everything they can, as much as reaching out, having video conferences one-on-one with students and with families. Um, every packet that went out. When we were doing paper and pen, were modified, um, for any student that had an IEP. By a case manager or a special education teacher to make sure it was modified with instructions that. Kids had questions or parents had concerns about how to do certain things and reinforce things at home. Um, our teachers have made themselves overly available to help with that. But it's, it's not, it's still not perfect, it's not as good as having that student in our building, in our classroom, one-on-one working with their teacher. But it's, it's as good as we're going to get it at this point.
Thank you, and then this is, this leads me to another question regarding distance learning. Um. Since we're, we're getting all this set up in place now, I mean, what does this mean for snow days in the future? Will there be a snow day? I know this maybe is not the right time to ask, but that's, that, that's just something that I happen to be wondering because. We're all set up now.
So we're not perfectly set up, like we had to scrape together, obviously, to get, to get to this position. Um, if there's any silver lining in this process is that yes, we'll be in. My opinion is we should never have a snow day again now because if we take them then, we can just tell everybody turn their stuff on. And we can all work from home because we're all experts at it. Um. But one of the, one of the shifts that we're going to have as a district, and I, I shared this with you guys earlier. Was kind of refocusing on what our priorities are moving forward, particularly into next year, assuming we don't come back this year or even if we do. Um. And refocusing more of our professional learning opportunities for, for teachers. Because we're, we're training as we go, no one expected this to happen. Um, so a lot of our teachers, although we had access to some of these technologies, there was never a need for us to, to master it. Because we, we never envisioned it being this, this long. Um, but our teachers are going through that training now and have been going since we've been out and will continue to do that. Um, but with the hope is when we do get everyone back. And I say this not to be an alarmist, but you guys all have televisions in your home, I'm assuming. Um, there's a lot of information out there that there's a possibility that this is going to return at some point. Whether it be in the fall, late fall, we're here September, you're here October, now hopefully there's, we're in a better position to handle it at that time. But I would not be surprised that at some point during the next school year.
Are we losing Chris?
Uh, no, I'm not losing Chris.
We just did lose Chris.
Can you hear me now?
Now I am, yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I'll get closer, then my head gets too big. Um. I, I would, I would not be surprised if come, as I said, at some point next school year. That we get a phone call that we got to go out again for another week, another two weeks. So the expectations is the, you know, the. The roadblocks and the hurdles that we had to go, go through now to get to the point where we are today with our plan. Um, there's a lot of flexibility and particularly from the state right now about, as I said earlier, stay focused, just do the best you can. I don't think we're going to be as fortunate next year if we're forced to close again, so we're going to need to spend, you know, our summer. Preparing for this to happen again. And being as easy as just flipping a switch that if we do, you know, if we're called out for a period of time. Our kids know what to do, everybody has the materials, they have the devices. And teachers can just pick up, what we're trying to achieve now is try to replicate. A student's normal day as best as you can. From their living room. That's what we're going to strive to when we get more time and, and, and more, more, you know, resources with regards to training and implementing and getting our kids ready for it, so. Um, the long answer to the question is, i- if we do this right, we shouldn't have a snow day again, but that's not my, that's not my decision. It's my decision to close you, it's whether the state will allow these days to count going forward, unlike they're having.
That's the other point, yeah, no, um, that's the other point, and I, like you, that was kind of like the follow-up, they're saying that potentially. We could be seeing another surge of this virus in the fall. Um, so I know there's questions of even if colleges are going to go back in the fall and different things like that. So I think that the initiative that everybody's taking is, has been very proactive. And, um, at times if it seemed reactive, it's just because, uh, what you talked about at twelve o'clock was different than what was told at four o'clock. So I appreciate everybody, um, accommodating and just kind of going with the flow, so, thank you.
All right, I will continue down the left, so Mrs. Hall, any questions?
Yes, I have two questions also.
Three.
Uh, first is about supplemental subjects like art, music and PE, how have we been handling that?
So they are up and running, the initial phase, um. Uh, of the, the phase of the packets only included the core subject areas. But what we had asked those subjects to do was to create enrichment materials for students. So like I can speak for our PE department, they would send. Um, enrichment opportunities for kids to do, you know, physical activities in their homes such as yoga and things along those lines. And there was mechanisms for the kids to interact with their teachers as well, the teachers were always available. And were reaching out to their kids, even though their subject wasn't part of the first packet. Um, they were still engaging with their kids. Um, that's becoming a little bit more formalized and you can see in the directive on the grading that the high school is allowing. Um, some of those enrichment opportunities to count. Um, as additional way, no kid's going to earn less than what they've earned. But they have opportunities to increase their grades in, in the event that they engage in some of these enrichment opportunities. But everybody else is up and running right now.
Second question is when there's a gap in this ordeal, do you plan to recover the equipment that you've given out? And should we also start looking forward to having all iPads or some other equipment for every student? And should we also start looking forward to having all iPads or some other equipment for every student?
Yes and yes. Um, we do have, the, the buildings did a tremendous. Um, they did a tremendous job tracking which students got the devices. Um, but there's, there's the realization that they may not come back in the same. You know, in the same position that they were in. I mean, we have to be realistic. Um, but we are going to try to, uh, uh, you know. Retake the, 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 the devices back from the students when, if and when we are able to return. Um, but yes, Joyce, I think the next phase is looking at, is part of what I said, that preparing for the worst for the following school year. Is having a more systematic, um, process in place. If we're not able to get every student a one-to-one device, at least have the process in place, whereas. On March 12th, when we handed kids pieces of paper, next time we have to do it, we send them home with a device. So it all depends on where we are fiscally and how quickly we can get devices turned around. Um, but I think part of our whole shift in mentality, mentality as a district through the curriculum office and through my office was. All right, we're going to have to kind of scrap everything we are hoping to do next year and, and, and put our, all our, our focus and emphasize. Our distance learning plans because we very well may be in this position again.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Ms. Thurston. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Yeah, no, I'm good right now. I don't have a question.
Okay, Mr. Ryder.
I just wanted to speak to Joyce's point. Um, so in phase three, like Mr. Dreszek said, they have been sending art, music. PE and also technology lessons. I can speak for the grades three through five level and for the middle school. Um, grade six through eight. Uh, I know that both of my kids have been sent supplemental assignments to do. So I just want to let Joyce know that. Not only was it in the works, like Mr. Dreszek said, but the, my kids are already doing their, their packets for that. So it is, it is happening now already.
And if I could just add to what Mr. Ryder said, our computer teachers, um, particularly at the elementary level, have done a fantastic job. Above and beyond their teaching responsibilities is they're actually create, helping guy create the how-to videos. So how to get on teams, it's actually a computer ed teacher who's actually doing the videos for us or, you know, how to use certain things. So we're utilizing everybody the best we can. And they, they, everybody is stepping up and going above and beyond what we're asking.
Anything else, Mr. Ryder? Mr. LeBlanc, any questions?
Uh, yes, I have one. Um, so, um, and before I ask my question, I know it's, uh. Very dependent on what the state and our governor allows and does not allow, but, uh. I know there's been some communication with, um, a few of our seniors and, um, parents and staff about. Continuing on with the graduation in some shape or form. Um, I'm wondering if there's any update on. Any kind of plan in place and if not, at the moment, um, if it's something we can. Explore, maybe even by possibly setting up a subcommittee or, you know, kind of, uh. Lighting the fire under the kettle a little bit again about, um, making it happen. Again, all contingent on. What's allowed at the time, but I think it's very important that we at least plan for something. Um, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but it'd be good to, uh, get a plan in place.
So there are, and, and again, this is one of those opportunities where I know I sent stuff, but you always forget what you sent to who. Um, you are correct, Mr. LeBlanc. We have actually, Ms. Clark and I and Mr. Longy. Um, actually had a, a teams meeting with, we put the invitation out to any member of the senior class that wanted to talk to us. About planning for an alternative graduation if need be. Uh, Erin also did a great job, um, surveying her kids to find out, you know, in the event. Were unable to have a traditional graduation, what would be your preference? And we had a meeting with about thirty-five to forty seniors who jumped on to kind of share their ideas with us about. What they'd like to see in the event they can't have their traditional graduation. Obviously, the first choice was on the field. Which is my first choice. Um, but we're planning for both. Um, we're looking at what our options would be in the event we have to postpone. And how far into the summer we'd be allowed and permitted to postpone. And one of the challenges with that is, let's say we picked an arbitrary date of, you know, July fifteenth. Um, you know, parents and families are going to make plans and people are going to come in, out of town. And the way things are going, and you all see this, is things seem to go in two-week increments. So in the event we were to plan an event for July fifteenth, you know, we can be told July twelfth, no large gathering, we can't have it again. So we have to plan for both and we're pro- in the process right now of looking at a virtual ceremony. First, the seniors are going to get something. They will get a recognition ceremony of some kind. That, that's the commitment I make to the kids. Um, it breaks my heart to hear from them about, you know, they spent their, in their lives, in their eyes, it's their whole lives. I mean, they came when they were five. To have this ripped away from them because of, you know, something that's not their fault is heartbreaking. Um, so our first choice is to do a traditional event, but the reality is, I don't see. And you guys can stop me if you feel otherwise, but even if we're able to come back in some capacity, large gatherings of people. Are not going to be part of our normal life for quite some time. I just, no one has given us any direction that that's going to get back. They're not. Not going to flip the switch and say, okay, you can have two thousand people on the field at infield high school. So we are planning for both. We're planning for a virtual ceremony and there's been a lot of great ideas that came from the kids. Uh, at the same time as we're still keeping the hope alive that we may be able to have some sort of in-person ceremony, but. Um, we'll continue to do that. I know the commissioner spoke actually live on TV in a press conference and was very adamant. Speaking directly to seniors, saying, you will have a graduation this year in some capacity. And we all emailed them afterward and said, thanks a lot. Now we have to figure out how to do it because you're not, the guy next to you isn't going to let us be on a field with four thousand people. So, um, for those kids, we'll, we'll continue. I know Erin and her team are actually exploring companies who help do virtuals. Virtual type ceremonies and it's been a lot of great ideas, but you have to take in health and safety and security as well. With some of the ideas, but in the coming weeks, we'll have something communicated out to you guys about what the resolution is and more importantly, it's going to have. Um, the input from the students' part, but the seniors are going to decide what they want to do and we're going to try to accommodate the best we can.
Well, yeah, if, if we're going to stay on the subject, I, I don't know who just piped in, but somebody, was it Joyce?
It was me, Joyce.
Well, Ms. Hall, could we, could we continue with everyone and then we'll come back to you? I just want to give everybody.
I just wanted on that subject. Based on a public statement that has been made statewide by a group of students who are attempting. To set a specific date for a statewide graduation.
Yeah, oh, you want me to answer that?
Well, I, I did hear the same thing, so I don't know if Mr. Dreszek has any more info on that or.
I don't. That was a question that was raised through the media to the governor. He had. I, I don't, my, my understanding is he was hearing about it for the first time, so he kind of said, yeah, sounds like a good idea. Um, but we haven't been shared what the specifics were and no one's really approached us on that. Um, but that's something, obviously, if it's, if it's going to be endorsed, we'll certainly look into. Um, but right now, we were focusing on getting input directly from our senior class. So that's where we, we've put all our efforts in at this point.
So. Yeah, I, I think it was right, uh, to, uh, kind of tag along to Joyce. It was. If there's going to be graduation ceremonies, every school in the state would be on the same day, correct?
That's the idea that was floated. Um, and there's been a lot of conversation about. The benefits or the, the detriments of doing that. Um, you know, if the. Like, for instance, if you're going to hold a physical graduation. Um, yeah, it sounds good that you can have kids si- sitting ten feet apart and kind of like they did in the Air Force Academy. But, you know, how are you going to tell four hundred kids that their parents can't come? And what's going to happen when they all show up anyway? Um, so there's a lot of those conversations that we're having about the logistics of it and then. Dealing with, you know, the security issues and the safety issues of everybody involved. Um, so nothing official has come through that. I think that was an idea generated by students somewhere. Um, it made its way to the media and then through the media to the governor and the governor said, so, you know, I'll look into it. That, that was the impression that I was left with it. But we haven't gotten anything officially on a universal graduation day. We've been told to continue to look at alternative options for graduation. That's the official word from the commissioners.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm certainly glad to hear that, uh, there's, you know, multiple options being looked at. Uh, for graduation, including, you know, if possible, even holding some kind of graduation format in itself. Um, and if not, uh, looking at other alternatives such as virtual. Um, so I think that's good. It, and I goes without saying that, uh. I think this town values the, a diploma and that's important. So the kids, like you said, Chris, have worked, you know. All their lives and then they get into high school four years, you know, that it's a big moment and, you know, we got to do everything we can to, uh, ensure that. They get some kind of recognition. Um, my only comment on it would be that. Um. That. If there is some kind of, uh, ceremony, whether it's virtual or in person, that. It's done before. Anytime come August, as I feel, um, if things are back on track a little bit, a lot of the seniors will be gearing up to. Possibly go off to their colleges or other avenues, um, and the month of August can get really tricky. So. I think, you know, it, if, if it has to get pushed off into the summer. We'd be looking at July the latest, you know, um, but again, it's all dependent on, on the state and there's many other. Um, factors that play a role in that, but that's just, uh. An opinion I had, uh, when it comes to how we go about this.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Mr. Salazar. Any questions?
I think we lost Bill, so I will, uh, I'll let you know when he comes back.
All right, so we'll move on to Mr. Rutledge. Any questions? No questions for Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Costa, any questions?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
All right, I don't, I think he's answered all the questions I, you guys presented. So, Mr. Blank, you have another question?
Uh, this is a, a quick one. Uh, do we, I guess a lot of people, um, are asking me and Scott about the projected last day of school. So I don't know if that's something to be decided or we'll know more after May twentieth.
Yes, uh, that question came up as well. Um, there's two reasons why I don't want to, first of all, the last day of school decision is probably going to be made by you guys. Um, but here's the dilemma you're going to have. What is that last day going to be? If it's completely virtual for the remainder of the school year, which we don't know. Um, then you have the ability, the hundred and eighty-day waiver has already been granted under the executive order. So, right now, and I. Been playing with the calendar all day here. Um, you know, right now, we're slated to get out on the seventeenth. Um, because kids are home before, if, if the, the school year, the remainder of the school year is, is shut down. Um, the board then has the right to say, okay, we're not going to make everyone do virtual learning all the way through that date because, you know, the high school's going to have finals and. Traditionally, it would be elementary schools that would be going for that date. You do have the right to say, you know, we're going to end on June tenth or whatever day you happen to choose. I'm hesitant to make that decision now because what if? The governor announces on the twentieth through his task force because they're making recommendations to him, that's the magic day. That, you know what, we could get back into school, but it's not going to be until June eighth. So if we decided to just end it, let's say June twelfth was the magic date that we all decided we're going to end, or the original hundred and eighty-first day was June eleventh. We're going to end school on June eleventh and then we get word after the twentieth, that kids can return. Um, and we can return on the eighth. Do you want your kids to come back for three days? Or do you want to let the kids come back for a week and a half? Or, you know, do we, and then it's going to come down to, you know. At some point, we want to create as much of a sense of normalcy for these kids as we can. So my opinion is, and, and it's going to end up, the attendance policies are waived statewide. So if we are able to return. Parents are going to have the right to not send their kids to school this year. And I don't, there's not going to be a debate about that. Because the attendance policies are waived. And I wouldn't blame a parent if they decided, I don't want to send my child to school for a week or two weeks, however long it may be. However, there's going to be a lot of kids out there who can really benefit about life getting back to normal, even if it's just for a few days. And my fear is if we make a determination that this is our last day. And then the state decides to let us back in and we have to backtrack that day to give kids more opportunities to come back. That's not a decision we need to make right now, but I have been getting that question a lot as well.
Um, I appreciate your answer and I think that, uh, approach is excellent. Um, like you said, with so much uncertainty. Um, and then the uncertainty around May twentieth as well. So, thank you.
Did we get Mr. Salazar back? No, we did not. Okay. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, a budget update. Mr. Dreszek.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, so last time we met, uh, we had a budget proposal with the town, to the town council. Uh, for a little over two point two percent. And as you know, the world fell apart since the last time we met. So during that process, and we did have this conversation with board leadership, um, and I, and I don't, I want to, don't want to overstate. The communication that goes on between myself and, and Chris Bronson. Um, when this thing first came to, to bear, we, we've been in every meeting together and we made a conscious decision that. You know, whatever decisions that we make individually are going to have a, a pretty big impact on a large portion of the community. So we need to make these decisions together. So you'll notice, as I said earlier, when the emergency declaration was made, that was the same day I decided to close schools. Um, then the realization of the financial impact of this pandemic came to light. And we started having conversations about, you know, what was feasible, um, from the town's perspective when it came to a budget that they can support and adopt. And Chris needed to make some decisions as to what it, what projections were going to be. Uh, in order to make sure that we can keep the town funded next year, now that this new reality of, it looks like the world's falling apart. Um, so we had a decision to make. We can either say, nope, that's what we've asked for, go ahead and cut it. Or we can make the decision to say, let's work together on this. This isn't us versus them. This is, the entire community is hurting right now. Um, let's do everything we can to try to support each other during this time. So that's the decision that we made and I shared it with leadership, obviously was aware. Um, that we were going to work on trying to reduce our requests, although it's not official and the, and the media did ask me that. Now, right now, your proposed budget is still what's on the books. And what Chris had recommended with the council was just the council's recommendation of a budget. Um, it wasn't, nothing is official at this point, doesn't require a board vote. It doesn't require a board vote till it comes back to us. So right now, this is just our, our showing of support to help Chris make tough decisions on behalf of the entire community. To try to sustain what we have, um, to get through this time and hope that we rebound quicker than what people might be anticipating. So the question was asked, what does it look like if we have to go down to a flat increase this year, still including the two percent carryover? And I can't stress that enough. Um, I know we had a lot of conversations about how great Eagle Academy has been for our kids. Um, but one of the byproducts of that was it also helped us save money on outplaced tuition. To the point of being in a position to, to keep back two percent in the carryover into the following year. Uh, I just put that in perspective. If we didn't have that two percent carryover, it's another one point five million dollars that we would have had have asked for. And in all likelihood, that would have been about fifty positions we'd have to cut. Um, but sharpening our pencils a little bit more, and this is where I, I shared the letter with Chris and I shared it with the media. You know, we can't sustain this every year. And I don't think that's the expectation. We really do work together very closely on this. Um, but if we can, you know, the responsible thing to do is to try to work together. No one wants to see us fighting over money when there's so much uncertainty right now. So if our budget, it was reduced to a flat funding and still allowing us to carry over those additional funds from this year. Um, we would be able to survive without having to lay anybody off. Now, we, we would be down eight positions, um, six teaching, uh, and probably two administrative, but they would all be through vacancies. Um, and that's still a question mark because there's a lot of information even now that we don't know. Um, you know, we don't know what class sizes are going to be in certain areas, but our priority was, can we get through this without having to do non-renewals? And not have to lay off any staff members in order to make it happen. We are in a fortunate position this year, and I'll say this year probably only, where we were, we weren't able to do that. So we were able to, to, I was able to verbalize to Chris that we could, we could survive a zero percent increase this year without having. And the two priorities were no major, you know, program, nothing that's going to affect kids and nothing that's going to have to force us to lay off staff members. And we were able to do that in a couple of reasons, ways, we, before we had gotten to the staff reductions. Um, we looked at every supply that we have, every, um, you know, prevent, obviously, when I said earlier about changing our focus on professional development. We were able to cut back on some of those areas because we're going to refocus on distance learning. So we were able to achieve some savings in that. We were able to cut back on some of those areas because we're gonna refocus on distance learning, so we were able to achieve some savings in that area. We have a lot of contracts this year that we have the money in the budget for to pay because we expected to be here, but we're not using them. So Lorena and Guy did a tremendous job reaching out to some of our vendors that said if we continue to pay our bills. Can we get a credit towards next year and that way that way we could take the reduction in next year's budget now we're gonna have to put it back eventually. But we're able to make reductions in some a lot of line items for next year based on our ability to fulfill our obligation this year, which we were forced to do anyway. So that was the the vast majority of the reductions were were being creative in the way that we paid our bills. Um and then we looked at the vacancies that we had and looked at the least impactful um at the moment. But I can tell you even since the day that we've made that that declaration that I made that declaration to Chris, some priorities have shifted. There was a position that was vacant that we thought we can get away with, but now we're looking at another area because someone's decided after the retirement date to not return. So this is gonna be fluid until you guys adopt the budget, so when the budget comes back to you and you have to take a vote and that's the evening I will tell you this is what all the specific impacts are. Right now was you know philosophically, physically, can you do it without having to gut the system? And I'll give Chris all the credit in the world. Um his conversation with me was if this is gonna decimate the system, I'm not gonna do it, we'll find the money. Um and it took a lot for him to say that and I I appreciated him saying that, but at the same time, we were able to put our heads together and come up with a way for us to survive for a year. By by asking our redu- having our 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 recommendation being reduced down to a flat fund. Um so there there's there's gonna be some areas that are gonna be hit, um but we're gonna try to absorb them the best we can, this is a one year fix in our opinion. And then you know, in the event the state does honor their their commitment when it comes to ECS and um you know, the state legislature as you guys heard is not coming back, so we don't really know what that means with a buy-in new budget, does it stand, are they gonna fill their end of the bargain and I caution everyone, this has happened once before where the state passed the budget, then they came back in October and cut it when we were already in school. And the town council had to find millions of dollars to subsidize us in order to keep us so we were held harmless for it, so there's this is gonna be fluid, but at the end of the day, when it comes time for you to adopt our budget. We'll have a very outlined plan as this is how we're gonna be able to use our, but right now we're confident that we can. And we thought it was important to share with 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 the council that we wanna be part of the solution too, so that way going forward as we rebuild, we can all rebuild together. And I also do have to mention that the public hearing on the budget is tomorrow night at five o'clock. Um obviously, it's gonna look a lot different than it has in the past. Um and because of technical reasons, the Walter and I are gonna get an invitation, um there's not gonna be a Q and A session like there has in the past, um my understanding is that public, the members of the public who wanted to submit questions have to submit them by a certain time. And the mayor will address the questions that were sent in some capacity, but um in talking with the town attorney last week, because of the way everything's written, a budget the community conversation is not required this year. But we still wanted to do one in some capacity, so the members of the public understand we still we're still looking for input, so it's gonna look a lot different than it has in the past, for those of you who are new to the board. You got lucky, you don't have to sit through that one this year, but um next year you'll be back in the auditorium. But that's tomorrow at five o'clock and it'll be on the same YouTube channel people are watching on tonight.
Question?
Yep.
I wanna I wanna start, uh let me start from the beginning again, Ms. Ms. LeBlanc, any questions? Okay, Ms. Hall, go ahead.
Mr. Dreszak, do you have to present the budget tomorrow during the hearing? They changed the agenda and you and Chris Bronson are the only ones supposedly speaking.
No, I know I'm gonna make a reference that our propose, the board's proposed budget is available on the website. And Chris and I are both going to make a statement. But we are, I am not going to be presenting the budget to the public, it it is it is posted on both the town and the board's website. And we will refer the the public to that. Um Chris and I agree that we will make an opening remark um similar to what we've shared thus far and then allow the town, the the mayor to conduct the meeting and how they they see it.
Anything else, Ms. Hall?
No, not at this time.
Ms. Thurston, any questions? No? Mr. Ryder, any questions?
Not specific to the budget, thank you um to Mr. Dreszak and Mr. Longy for making those numbers work. Um I I think it it is what it is, so thank you.
Mr. LeBlanc, any questions? No? Mr. Salazar, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this.
Now, we missed your question the last time, do you have any questions from his comments before?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have problems with my connection here, but no, not not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Rutledge, any questions? Ms. Costa, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, so we've gone through the budget, so now we're at number seven JFK schedule changes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dreszak?
That's me and then I'm done, I promise. Um so under ordinary circumstances, um we would have had by this point several community events, uh presentations to the board, probably to the curriculum subcommittee, this is a conversation that we've had um over the last couple of years. Um one of the things I asked Dr. Barrios to look into is there's always this question with regards to JFK and the way they schedule the building with regards to looping. Um and what I asked Dr. Barrios to do this year was that any decision that we made, we would try to do it with as much input as we can, as much communication as we can, well, that was all planned. Um I can attest that Mr. Bar- Dr. Barrios had done a fantastic job with rolling this out, particularly at your March twenty eighth meeting, that didn't happen. So um we tried to hold off as long as we can to try to see if maybe we can push this decision down the road. But with a lot of the um circumstances surrounding JFK, particularly with the building committee, uh not the building committee, the building project. Um I've been asked to reconsider if we can make this adjustment now or normally we would have gone through channels so that people had this community so it wasn't blindsided by parents, we will still do it. Um and if you we'll still communicate this message out and it really only affects seventh grade parents. But as you know, our traditionally our seventh grade teams loop with the eighth grade team, so they stay in their same team for two years. The problem that we're running into particularly next year is with the amount of teams that we have in grade seven and grade eight and then the amount of teams coming in next year and the spaces that are designed for them with under construction. It's a very challenging proposition to continue looping for next year. One of the things we were hoping to do was to reconfigure a lot through the building project. So that way when we reopen JFK and its completion, it'll look a lot like the process we did at Enfield High School when we change made big changes such as Eagle Block and and all the electives, that was the plan. The plan now is is how do we fit a square peg in a round hole, continuing the way we're operating at the same time, finding enough spaces and getting people in there and making sure that kids can fit based on the amount of teams. Because there's currently only, keep in mind, four eighth grade teams right now and three teams in seven, but there's a larger group coming up, so it's gonna be a challenge to keep them in the space. So I went ahead and told Dr. Barrios that he can go ahead and schedule the building um without going through the traditional looping process like we normally could, it's not a decision the board has to vote on. Um but because it's sort of a longstanding tradition in town, we wanted to have the board input on it. Um but right now, we've gotta try to schedule that building for next year under a construction project and in the midst of trying to do all this distance learning, we just couldn't put the decision off any longer, so I wanted to you're the first one besides the two Andrews to know we're gonna go ahead and do this. Um but I had to make a decision, help him make a decision and I made it for him. Um because right now, there's a lot of priorities floating around in that building and that's one less one less thing I have to have them staying up late at night trying to figure out. So I know that may cause a lot of questions, I've asked Dr. Barrios, he has communications going, ready to go out to families. We are planning on having evenings at the middle school so parents can come in and ask questions, kids can come in and find out what about it, obviously, we can't do any of that now. Um but right now is trying to, again, the best way to describe it is fit a square peg in a round hole um under a building project and swing spaces that we needed to to make ultimately a decision to do.
Alright, I'll go around again, Mr. Blank, any questions? No? Ms. Ms. Hall, any questions?
No.
Ms. Thurston, any questions? Mr. Ryder, any questions?
Not as it pertains to looping at JFK.
Mr. LeBlanc, any questions? Mr. Salazar, any questions?
Yeah, I I do have one and I just wanna make sure that I understood the statements from uh the superintendent, is is the concern only for the duration of the construction or is the concern regarding the new building once it's finished?
No, the 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 ultimate plan was to reconfigure that process for when the building opened in its completion. Because right now, for instance, if you're in seventh grade, you stay on your same team, same kids, uh same teachers, everybody just moves up to eighth grade. Well, the models have changed since that was originally introduced, but that that was sort of a staple at JFK that we didn't wanna just pull the rug from everybody you know, and not tell them that we were gonna change it. Um we're being forced to make that decision because of logistics, but that will prob- most likely be the decision that moves forward from from here on out.
Okay, so so.
We're heading in that direction anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll it'll go past, we're we're, the plan was to unveil it when its construction was completed. Logistics are now forcing our hand to do it earlier.
Okay, does does that tie in into any concern of um sufficient space in the building because of the increased number of teams or students coming in?
Not overall, but it's the way the teams are configured and where they have to physically go in the swing spaces. And have to move, they would have to, you'd have to separate teams because there was too many of them or instead of keeping them all together. Um they have a very I I can't wait when we can actually do this, um as far as one of the things we asked Dr. Barrios to put together as part of the building project was is you know, the vision of the building going forward, similar like we did, we asked Andy to do when he was opening Enfield High School. Um and there's a lot of exciting changes that could be made to Enfield High, uh to JFK to enhance the experience our kids are getting to go along with the new building. But I don't think on a teens call in a slideshow is gonna do it justice, so once we're able to actually physically be in a room again, we'll make sure we we get that up.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Rutledge, any questions? Ms. Costa, any questions? And I I will just add that I the JFK Building Committee is still meeting, they've uh they've gone through the uh the bidding process and and bids have been very, very good coming in. So they are working on that. And we had a we had a meeting, actually virtually meeting last Thursday with them and 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 everybody was on board and and in the process just keep going, so so we're looking to, they're looking to start breaking ground. Yes, if if we end up calling school for the for the rest of the year, then it could be sooner, but but right now they're 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 ready to just put the shovel in or minute minute they're allowed to get there without any kids in there, so we'll leave it at that. And now I'm gonna leave it, I wanna open it up to every board member to just comment and say some good things and bad things, whatever. And we'll start by left to right again. Uh Ms. Ms. LeBlanc, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of things, um as far as the seniors go at Enfield High, um we hear you uh loud and clear, um I'm glad that the superintendent and Aaron put together their um the group and sent out the survey and um you know, I hope and pray that we get the best that we can for you guys. Um the other thing is I would like to commend um the principals on their commutations to the families or the communications to their families, this hasn't been easy as far as communications go and just the adjustment and to what we're dealing with, so I appreciate um the communications. Um the teacher parades, um I was able to go along the parade route for a few of them and um those were amazing. And um at the end of the day, I just wish all of our families and our staff and our students um just good health. And um you know, I know that the sentiment among the school districts is that the teachers miss going to school every day and seeing their students. Um and until you have a virtual meeting or get to see friendly faces, you don't realize how much um you miss it and it almost becomes an emotional uh type thing, even tonight, seeing my board of nine, it was almost a little emotional at first, I haven't seen anybody, but everybody's here, everybody's well. Um and you know, uh we have one of our own board members that's going to work every day um and is is kind of in the front line for us, so um I just wish everybody um well and I just wanna see if there's anything else. Um uh I think that's all I have and I just wanna wish everybody um to stay safe, stay healthy, um ask us questions, we're all here anytime and um stay safe, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blank. Ms. Mrs. Hall?
I want to thank everyone from the the nutritionists up through the superintendent for dealing with this extreme situation so well. And I particularly like to thank the elementary principals for their newsletters, they are creative and entertaining. Um especially the new Piglet, uh um Egglet. Egglet from the uh early learning center, I think that's adorable. And good luck for all of us in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, Mrs. Thurston.
I just, you know, like Joyce and Tina said, I just wanna thank everybody, they're doing a great job. And Tina, you're right, it is emotional to see everybody. Um you know, Chris and Andy, I don't know what we would do without you guys, you guys have just been absolutely amazing. Thank you for all of your hard work. Um you know, and to see the parents, I mean, the parents, they didn't sign up for this, they didn't set up to be you know, homeschool teachers, but they're doing a great job with their kids, they're so creative. And you know, they should, they should be proud of themselves. Um on a personal note, I'm gonna just throw this out there, knock on wood, my facility is doing great and we are COVID free. Um we are doing everything we can to keep it out of there. Um they're exhausted, but the residents, we're going around every day with iPads so we can call their families. Um and like I said, we're doing everything to keep us COVID free, so everybody stay safe and you know, hopefully we'll see you all soon.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston, and please send my thank you to your to the facility you work at and and for all the hard work they're doing for everybody. Uh, Mr. Ryder?
Um so to echo what Mr. Dreszak had said earlier, I wanna thank the Enfield Police Department for the motorcades. Um as Tina had also mentioned, um the fact that we have that community experience, it isn't just the teachers driving through your neighborhood and and waving to your third and sixth graders. Um it it involved the Enfield Police Department, the Enfield Fire Department, uh EMS services, I mean, the car, it wasn't just a line of teacher cars. Um it was a lot of our neighbors and our the people that take care of us here in Enfield made sure that they took an hour or two several times for several different schools to come by and see our kids and and that just meant the world to them. Um I also wanna thank nutritional services, um I went to JFK and um to the high school for the first few days of this, I took pictures to post to answer people's questions. Um we we you know, we posted stuff, so if you go to enfieldpto.com/ meals, it has the days and hours every week. Um and it changed over spring vacation and now it's back to Mondays and Wednesdays, but the hours are posted. Uh there's photographs, which driveway you go in, where where do you go once you get on property, which side of the building, the procedures, stay in your car, pull up, etc. Um we just want people to know that this is out there, um so we post about that every day on Enfield PTO on Facebook and also at enfieldpto.com/ meals um with hours and days. And as a parent, I wanna thank the parents and and you already alluded to this, um the square to my right. Um but I wanna thank the parents because they did not sign up for this, a lot of them are working from home, hopefully they're still working. Um and that they are working from home and they're safe, uh and they're letting the kids borrow their laptop at ten o'clock in the morning to check in with their third grade classroom and and you can see the numbers going up because I'll look over my son's shoulder and the first few days it was him and three or four kids and now you see twelve or thirteen out of the eighteen kids signing on every day and and they love seeing each other. Um so to the Mississorenses of the world, teaching grade three uh who have to deal with the cool crazy backgrounds that change uh with every meeting and the kid finds a new background and we spend five minutes talking about that and then we get into our lessons. Um thank you to the teachers for putting up with that because the kids love seeing each other and that and that includes, you know, having some crazy backgrounds, it's it's fun. Um but I I did wanna thank all the teachers for that, um for all the Zoom calls, which then became team calls and it's daily emails and scanning your homework and emailing the homework back to them and now we're teaming the homework back to them. Um so thank you to the parents, it's. And now we're teaming the homework back to them. Um, so thank you to the parents. It's been a lot. And, um, I know it's frustrating. I see all the posts on social media and some days are easier than others. And I kind of tried to stay in the same routine over spring vacation where maybe we did one day of math and one day of reading, just there wasn't 10 or 11 days in a row. We didn't do that. Um, the Monday coming back was still difficult, but, um, because we had to do both subjects, um, but it, we're getting there. Um, so in addition to that, also in Enfield PTO, we've been doing spirit weeks with the PTOs. I want to thank the PTO parents, um, they're on the front line as far as questions. Um, when like Mr. Dreszek said, he was calling us once a week and then the principal started calling once or twice a week. Uh, we were getting questions as PTO parents every day, you know, when's phase three packets coming? How do I print that? Or my teacher didn't email me yet. Oh, mine did. And don't worry, everybody will hear the same message in the next few hours. We promise it's coming. Um, so thank you to PTO parents for filling in those holes and for staying in touch with me and making sure that the 300 families in your building and the 400 families in your building and the 1100 families at the middle school were constantly in the loop and getting these updates, you know, posting several times a day. Um, so we've tried to do things like spirit week, you know, today was PE day, you know? Do you remember your PE teacher stretching routine? Show us a picture of you guys stretching. Uh, get outside. It's beautiful today. Stay in your yard. Stay safe. Um, but go out and do something outside, you know, send us a picture. Uh, to that point, Enfield unplugged this year, uh, our kite partner is now going to be doing Enfield recharged, um, which is great because when I first saw the Enfield unplugged email and only read the subject and it was followed by we'll be different this year. All I saw was Enfield unplugged and I said, good luck with that. Because all we have are our computers and our Netflix, uh, you know, to keep us entertained. So we weren't going to be unplugging this year and, and they knew that. And, uh, so it's going to be called Enfield Recharged. So each day there is a special like virtual field trip, um, a, a virtual painting class. Uh, our teachers and our, our, our partners in town are, are volunteering their time to take us on a virtual field trip or to paint with us. So check that out on the kite website and we'll also post it on enfieldpto.com as well as the Facebook page. And I know Enfield Public Schools will also post and share that, uh, so keep an eye out for that. And there, there's fun things to do and there are different times, like Mondays at four in the afternoon, Tuesdays is a little bit earlier. So depending on when you're online with your kiddos, uh, make sure you do something fun online. Like we were posting a lot of suggestions when school first closed, like here's a virtual field trip through this, uh, national landmark, this, you know, historical site, these museums across the world. Um, we were trying to give people something to do between packets as well. Um, that was kind of fun. And, and I will say, we had, the first four weeks we were closed, so mid-March to mid-April, our posts were reaching over 30,000 eyeballs. And almost half of those, over 14,000 of those posts were engaged. So for any of you guys that do Facebook, I, I know Chris does and knows, that's huge. Um, so over a four week span, you know, we're reaching 14,000 people that actually opened the post and read it or shared it or opened the picture. Um, we became like a resource for the parents when you were only getting a call once a week or hearing from teachers or principals, you know, every, twice a week. So we, we filled in that daily gap and, um, and thank you, everybody for liking and sharing and, and joining in and, and doing a lot of those ideas and setting the pictures in. And it, it's been great. It, it's been hard. People were much more willing to participate early on when like Mr. Dreszek said, we thought we'd only be doing this until spring vacation. Um, but people still love it and they get a kick out of it. And we were promoting the mayor's idea with the, you know, ringing the bells every night at eight o'clock. So we had an event page for that. So people were liking it and, you know, by marking yourself interested in a Facebook event, you get a reminder each day. So every day at seven o'clock, they'd be like, oh, don't, don't forget, we're going to go outside and bang our pots and pans in an hour for a few minutes. Um, and people really get a kick out of stuff like that. So thank you for that. Our, the dot com had over 2,400 individual users. Uh, that was on April 6th, you know, so the, the 30 days leading up to April 6th, we had a, almost 2,400 people visiting the website in addition to the 30,000 people seeing the Facebook posts. Um, and we're going to be doing a lot more with this stuff as, you know, we, we don't know exactly when we're going to go back and, and if we go back in phases and how we're going to do that safely and all that stuff. So I, I can tell you that, that we're going to be making announcement later this week. Uh, I've been working with the Enfield High School PE department. Um, so we have something, a, a virtual event that we're going to be sharing with everybody in the next few days for May. Um, so we're very excited about that. So again, if you want to stay up to date on things like that, uh, go to Enfield PTO on Facebook and like it or follow it. Uh, or go to enfieldpto.com and just bookmark the site and, you know, the, the Facebook page, the Twitter account changes every day. Uh, sometimes seven, eight posts a day. Um, the website changes daily as well. Anytime you see a principal post, something we throw it on there as well, just so it's in as many places it can be. Because the one thing parents just need to know is what's going on, like what, what's coming next? When's the next packet, et cetera? What can I do? Um, so we've been happy to, to help fill in that resource, the PTO friends and I. And, uh, so thank you for that and everybody stay safe. Um, and we'll see you guys soon.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. LeBlank.
Uh, yes, um, so there, again, there's not enough thank yous to go around to, you know, um, what's been done. I think, you know, those who spoke before me kind of covered all the bases, um, with the individuals who have really stepped up to the plate. And I don't know if it's just me or if it's my Enfield pride, but there is something about the way we've done things with the motorcades and, and everybody's been doing it, you know, all these different districts. But there's something special about when it's done in Enfield and the connection that is there between, uh, parents, students and teachers and our administration. Um, I saw firsthand when this, you know, when, when everything kind of was up in the air, uh, which everything still is. But, um, when we first had to close the schools, the preparedness that our administration had with Chris and Andy and, uh, moving forward with, uh, distant learning packets and getting, um, that all set and ready to go. Um, you know, I feel I, I brought up the graduation, you know, because I really do. And the seniors are, are definitely some of the ones I'm thinking about most. I know how special that was to me a few years ago and, um, yeah, it hurts, it hurts losing that. So it gave me a boost of confidence to hear that we're doing everything we can to ensure that something is, um, done for those seniors. Um, and you know, the other side of me too is, you know, there, there was a whole spring schedule of sports that were missed out on and I feel for those kids or hockey team. Um, they were just about to embark on their, uh, first tournament run in a while. And unfortunately that got taken from them too. Um, so it stinks, but you know, we're all in this together and, um, I said it, I say it constantly on my Facebook post, but we'll get through this together. I know we will. And, um, it'll only be a matter of time before we're back into classrooms and, and, you know, things are back to normal. And I look forward to that day. I know it's coming. I know there's light at the end of the tunnel. And, um, with that being said, let's get back to work. Um, so that we can ensure that when that day comes, the schools are ready to go and we're ready to rock and roll again. So stay healthy, stay safe, everyone, and, uh, I miss everyone.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlank. Mr. Salazar.
Uh, yeah, I actually, um, I will make a brief statement. I know that I'm going to echo the, the emotions and the, and the heartfelt feelings from, uh, the rest of the board or from my colleagues in the board. Uh, I, I prepared a small, um, statement that, that I will read. Um, these are very difficult times that we are living in and also historical. At times like this, when we are facing a crisis, when many things that are, we are accustomed to doing and we have grown used to take for granted or suddenly attended, we typically find and share strength and encouragement with those that are important to us. Those we care about, our family, our friends, our community. In our particular case, our communities, our children, our students, their parents, their teachers, the support staff, all members of the district administration and this board. Uh, therefore I want to encourage all of you that may be listening or watching to please continue to support this community and all the members of this community that through their efforts are attempting to provide some level of normalcy to an otherwise completely abnormal situation. All of our district employees deserve credit, but so do you, the parents. Everyone is doing a phenomenal job attempting to provide our students normalcy and opportunities for learning. I commend and applaud you all. I also want to reiterate to you that you're not alone. Although the state of emergency Connecticut is currently under, places significant limits on the actions of this board. Keep in mind that we are available and we are listening. So hang in there. There is a proverbial light at the end of the tunnel now beginning to show and we are getting through this together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Great words. Uh, Mr. Rutledge.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too will keep this brief, uh, you know, in addition to echoing the sentiments of, um, you know, what everybody else has said, I'd also like to make sure that we thank those people on the front lines, our police officers, our firefighters, our EMTs, the people working in hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, even those people that have to restock the grocery stores and are exposed to this every day. Um, definitely appreciate all the work they're putting in on this and I hope they, along with everybody else stays, uh, safe and healthy. Um, you know, to try and look at the positive side a little bit, maybe a silver lining here is that, you know, because, uh, because of what we're allowed to and what we're not allowed to do, hopefully this maybe brings some families closer together. I know I've been spending a lot more time with my wife and my, uh, three golden retrievers and they love all of it. Um, so I know they're appreciative there and as another bit of silver lining, maybe this also helps, uh, bring us a little bit closer to technology and the use of government, just like we're doing, um, tonight. I've long been an advocate for using pieces of technology like this to expand public communications at our meetings, both town council and Board of Ed. Maybe even for our various Board of Ed subcommittees. So, um, perhaps going forward, that's something that we look into and consider, but again, stay safe, uh, stay healthy and I wish everybody the best.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, going next to last certainly has some advantages and disadvantages. Um, I don't keep a thesaurus in my living room, so I'm not going to just repeat what everybody else has said. I think the administration and faculty have done a bang up job, especially being ready so early. Um, very appreciative. I, I agree with everything the other board members have said. Um, can't say enough about the parents and guardians of the students. Uh, I, I can't imagine having to deal with your own impacts of this virus, whether you're not working, you are still going to work and you need to find daycare, you're trying to work from home and compete over the laptop. I, I just, I, I, I give you a lot of credit and I think you've shown a lot of patience as we're all in this, trying to find our way. Um, and trying to do homeschooling with your children. I'm glad it didn't happen when my kids were in school. Um, we do here all the time, do the best you can. We're all in this together. And I hope they're not sounding trite because I think everybody means it when they say, just do the best you can. Because that's all we can do for our kids. We didn't sign up for this. They didn't sign up for this. But as the adults, we owe it to our children to do our collective best. I do though worry about the children. Um, I, I think they're doing well and they're resilient, but they're being asked to do the unthinkable things. Don't go to school. Don't go play with your friends. There are no school activities, no school sports. Be patient with us while we figure out how to log into this site or how to read this paper or how to do that. We don't know how to send them back. We don't, I, I, I worry about them. You know, from pre-K and kindergarten where they're supposed to be learning social skills as well as academics up through high school where they're in their cherished year, senior year of high school. And this is not something that they would have ever imagined and, and I think the impact could be deep and long lasting. Um, so, so I do offer kudos to everyone, um, but I think our work is just beginning. Um, I think we have to prepare now for what could be a very different long-term teaching and learning environment. And given what little we know about what the state's going to do, I, I know it's hard. I, I think the most important thing during any crisis is, is communication. I think it's key. Um, I thank you for all the updates tonight, Mr. Dreszek, in terms of all the things we're doing. Um, but I think we also have to take a hard look at what are the roadblocks to us doing a better job? We talked a little bit about technology and iPads. Um, I think we need to strike while the iron's hot and do what we can now to, because it's near and dear to everybody's heart right now. Once the start states start, when the, the state starts opening up and people are going to start to forget about this. So if we need funding, there's grants out there now to get some laptops I was just reading about today. We need to start now with what's getting in our way of doing an even better job than what we've done and how do we go about it? I, I know there's a budget meeting tomorrow. We don't know what the impact is yet, but I, I, I think we just need to, to get on it. Um, I, I am, as I said, worried about the kids. So I'd like some communication around what are we doing to address the needs of our students, especially as they either return to school in the fall or in June? Or, and what are we doing to help them get through this difficult time now? Um, what are, what are the things we think we need to do to be ready to go to school in the fall? Just because the governor might say, oh, it's free for all, go back to school. Maybe that's not how we want to approach it. We were quick out the door, um, with our packets. You know, do we want to take some different approaches? Do we want to think about things differently, even if it's not required? Do we want masks for our children? You know, what do we see the fall forgetting what the state is going to mandate? And then I guess lastly, and we've talked about it a lot, is how do we make these last few months special for the seniors? Um, while they'll always be remembered as the year of the coronavirus, um, it would be nice if they were also, if their senior year was also memorable for some other things. So, um, I guess that's it for me, everybody. I hope they, you all stay safe, stay healthy, stay home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Mr. Longy, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for asking, Mr. Chairman. Just want to wish everyone, uh, just stay safe. I, I echo what, uh, Ms. Costa said, if you don't have to be out and about, don't, uh, err on the side of caution so we can get through this quicker. I can tell you, working is boring, not being able to go into schools. Uh, it's virtual meeting after virtual meeting. Uh, just really can't wait to get back at it and just be with the students. So stay safe, everyone. That's all I have. Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Longy. So it comes to me as it always does. Mr. Dreszek, Mr. Longy, Mr. Barasa for the IT, Mr. Mr. Russell also worked on the IT to get this meeting going. I'd like to thank ETV for, for putting these meetings together so we could at least the night of us get together and meet virtually, but at least we meet. Um, I just did on everything that was said, there was a lot of thank yous to everybody. We were in front of this. We, we, we've been, the town's been meeting in this since January. We knew this was coming. We knew that something was going to happen. We've been ahead of this. After our March 10th meeting, we knew that, you know, everything just came to head right away that, that week, that Thursday, we started passing out packets because that Friday we were closed already. So, so I want to thank all the staff like I did on the 10th. I'm going to thank them again for all their work. And then putting together the, uh, the motorcades, that was awesome. I was in a couple of them and I enjoyed it. I was in the back. I didn't want to sidestep. Reporters came to, the mayor and I were in one and they came to us asking the questions and we said, no, this is the teachers. Go to, go, go get the teachers and put, and put, make the story about the teachers. So they did. So, I just, like, like Mr. Dreszek said, I mean, we are building the, we are building the plane and we're learning to fly it at the same time. And that's a great statement. Um, this, it's just been incredible. I wish we could open schools tomorrow and get right back at it, but unfortunately it's not that easy. But I'm, I'm hoping the sooner the better, we can get the kids just, just to get them socially interactive again with their friends and, and do something for them. And I'm, you know, I'm hoping graduation, we, we definitely have to have a graduation. So, uh, I want to throw a shout out to, uh, masksforheroesct.org. They, uh, they contacted the mayor and I back when this all started, that they had some masks available. We made it available to the, uh, to the EMTs. We made two trips down to the shore to get them, but it was my pleasure to do that with the mayor. And I, and it's, and that was a great, so if you want to just Google masksforheroesct and you could come up with their website because they are accepting donations for future masks. Um, I want to thank Mr. Broxton and the council and the mayor. We've been working together. I've been on the phone with the mayor pretty much every day through this whole thing. And, and with, 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 you know, the Chris and Chris show on getting the budget to where we need to be. It's just, Ed Field's first, just like, just like our, our slogan says, which I have hung out behind me. We make a difference in Ed Field, every child, every day. We make a difference in Enfield every child, every day. Well, we make a difference in Enfield every resident as well. So, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank all the board members. So now we got to get back to, we got to back, back to work. I want to, uh, request the subcommittee chairmen to start putting some possible dates for next week to get, possibly get some subcommittee meetings going virtually. So we can get back, uh, you know, back on working on things. But I'll leave it to the subcommittee chairmen to handle that. And, uh, and I think I'll leave it at that. But other than that, thank you all. It's a difficult time. We're, we're, we're going through it a day by day, just like this whole crisis has been. At, at the first, it was changing every hour. It seemed like so. So I, I doubt I'll leave it at that. Any other comments that I missed? So the number nine, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Thurston?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Ms. Costa raised her hand. I didn't know whose voice that was. So, all in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Good night and thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Stay safe and well.